I would like to call this August 21 Fridley School Board meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to just make a note that one of our school board members, Christopher Riddle, is joining us via iPad right over here next to Donna, so he will be participating with us. There he is. Hi, Chris. He'll be participating with us over the web, so he is present. We'll start with the approval of the agenda and suggested motions and resolutions. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve? Second.
Approved. A motion by Prueto, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Dr. Kim Hile will start us off with our spotlight on recognition.
Good afternoon. Thank you. So, we are excited and thrilled to introduce to this evening our International Key Club President Emily Rice, and she will share her trophy and her awards and her honor representing Fridley. We're just thrilled, so welcome.
Yay! Thanks for having me. So, before I get to what these trophies are about, I just want to explain a little bit about what Key Club is and how we got to having these. So, Key Club is a student-led service organization that is international, spans across 38 countries, and has 264,000-ish members. So, we have a Key Club in our very own Fridley High School, and we have about 84 members as of now, but that typically increases as the school year starts. And so, we spend our time building leaders within our students as well as serving our community in weird and wacky ways. So, our Key Club year starts and ends in July at our International Convention, and every year it's held at a different place. This year was held at Chicago, and during this convention, we elected our new International Board, as well as celebrated the year of service we had and gave out awards to our outstanding clubs. So, this year at International Convention, Fridley Key Club was named a distinguished Diamond Level Club, which puts us in the top 1% of clubs for the 17th year in a row, I believe, maybe 18th, which I'm pretty sure is a record. And we also got 3rd place in digital club poster, as well as 1st place in Single Service Award. The Single Service Award is something that's really exciting because it was based off of our Socktober event. Some of you may have heard of Kid President, who does Socktober every year to collect socks, because socks are the least donated item to homeless shelters and during clothing drives and things like that. So, we decided to, as a Key Club, to create an entire month-long event around that, starting and kicking off with the Socktober Sleepout. Some of you may have heard about it in the past. It used to be called the Homeless Sleepout, but we changed it to fit the theme better. So, any Key Clubber that was registered could donate at least six pairs of socks, and they got to spend the night on the football field and sleep in a cardboard box, which I know doesn't sound appealing, but to high school students, it's really fun. You get to spend a weekend with your friends, partying, building forts, being cool, I don't know, stuff like that. But yeah, so we wrote a report on this and sent it to International, and we received an award on it, which is really exciting because the Homeless Sleepout/Socktober Sleepout has been going on for over 20 years. So, to finally get an award for that after making this big change shows that we're bringing this event and bringing our service in the right direction. Earlier I mentioned during International Convention that we elect our new International Board. This year, I ran for International President, which is what I was elected to this year, which is really exciting.
Congratulations.
So...
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, my job is to generally oversee Key Club International as a whole, as well as lead our International Board in making decisions for our organization. So, I do a lot of strategic planning side of things, as well as finding ways to make sure all of our clubs, including Fridley, are in good hands and have the resources they need to serve the world effectively, so.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Good job.
Well, we are very proud of you and of Key Club here in Fridley. I have a question, though.
Yeah.
What is it about Fridley's Key Club that makes it so successful? There's something in the makeup because it's year after year after year.
I think there's a few factors that tie into it. I think the biggest factor, at least, that's impacted me is our Qantas advisor, Mary Bowen. We all call her Crazy Mary.
Yes, I know her.
And she brings a lot of enthusiasm to our club. She's been our club advisor for 27 years, I believe, so she's been around for a while. And she's a great support for all of our students and really encourages us to bring our leadership to its full potential. I think another thing, and it kind of ties into Mary's enthusiasm, is the way we do service. We don't just do service. We do service that not only impacts our community and targets the needs of our specific community, we also do it in fun ways. So, the Socktober Sleepout is a good example of that. We also do the Teeter Totter Marathon, where we raise money for Eliminate, a subset of UNICEF, and sit on a teeter totter for 72 hours during President's Day weekend. We go on shifts, though, so you know, like, we're good.
It's a long time.
Yeah, no, it really is, but it's so crazy that people just have to donate and pledge money because they've never heard of it before, so.
So, my next question, what's the succession plan for Mary Bowen?
She can't ever leave, right? Crazy Mary can never leave.
Exactly, yeah. She'll just be here forever.
Right.
But we do have three very strong faculty advisors at our school, but Key Club runs off of having both faculty and Qantas advisors. So, there's a few options that are being talked about. Jessica Baker, a staff member at Fridley High School right now, is currently one of our faculty advisors, but since she is also a Qantas member, she could step in as a Qantas advisor. I hope she doesn't see this and get mad at me for like pushing her position too soon, but...
I won't put, you don't have to list your plan. I just want to know that you have one.
Right. But otherwise, you know, we still have time to think, so, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? We are so proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Next, I will be sharing the 2018 Hall of Fame inductees. And I'm, inductees that will be entering, we have Dick Donlin, which is a contributor, Krista Holm, Darkest, athlete class of 1987, Don Holm was coached from 1961 to 1993, Scott Johnson was in athlete class of 1972, Ron Holland, athlete class of 1966, Steve George, coached from 1969 to 2005, we have Bruce Larson, who was athlete class of 1979, Julie Cragness-Nalplica was athlete class of 1976, Kim Olson, athlete class of 1975, and Cal Palmer, athlete class of 1967. So, congratulations to all of our 2018 Hall of Fame inductees.
Wow, some of them did that coaching and such for a long time. Congratulations to them. Next, I'm going to ask David Weber and Jael Mackmore to come up and share our district annual video reports.
Good evening.
Evening.
Every year, we are honored to take a look back at the great things that happened in our district, student achievement, our staff, our faculty, our clubs, our groups. And this year, we have a nice little video to look and to share with our community all the great things that have happened this past year.
Welcome to Fridley Public Schools 2017 through 18, Year in Review. Our students are achieving at high levels.
You are role models. There are kids in this school that have watched you. They see what's possible, of what you can do.
Our students are leaders.
Your Key Club International President, Emily Rice, from the Minnesota Dakotas District.
We celebrate the excellence of our teachers and staff. We are proud to welcome the newest members of the Fridley family. We are committed to providing a safe and positive learning environment.
This summer, work continues at Fridley High School. The front parking lot area is being extended while the north end of the parking lot is also being repaved. The biggest changes will be in the main office area, which is being reconfigured to make better use of space and improve secure access. In addition, an upgraded entrance on the northeast corner of the building into the gym area will welcome students and parents to games and events. The Fridley Community Center also is receiving much-needed attention. Safety and security is the primary focus, as updating the facility from elements in place since the Parkview Elementary School Days of the main building in 1957. Phase 2 of the middle school front parking lot will also be completed this summer with a reconfiguration of the traffic, allowing safer access to sidewalks for students.
Fridley Public Schools welcomes Dr. Kim Hile as our new superintendent. We look forward to continuing our journey as a world-class community of learners.
Very well done.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is, how will this video be used? Are there places people can, the community can see this or show it?
Certainly. It'll be up on YouTube for all the public to see, but it will also be played in places like the enrollment center, so incoming families can see without having the audio on what kind of programs we have to offer, the successes that we enjoy every year. So, it'll be available in a number of ways.
All right. Thank you. Very nice work.
Thanks.
Next, I would like to invite up Kathy Kramer, who's going to give us a technology integration update. And she always makes technology sound so fun.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I was going to bring my trophies, but I carry mine.
There's too many of them.
Yeah, too many of them. I'm really excited to talk about the Fridley Idea Lab, and thanks, Lori. This is an opportunity where we're going to have a crowd-based program where every single staff person will be able to submit an idea for a new service, a new product, or a better way of doing things. And we are part of a cohort of schools around the country that are doing this. It comes out of the Design School in Stanford, and we're super excited to get this going this fall. It'll connect everybody onto the site to share their ideas. We'll have a clearinghouse of great ideas, and we're going to have even more of a culture of innovation than we already have. So, we're excited about that. This is our team. You'll recognize somebody else in this room is on our team. And then, we have more. We went to training with all the cohort members over the summer. We're still recruiting other members of the team. Next year, students will be able to submit ideas. This year, students can submit ideas with their teachers. The cohort suggested that we first do the staff and then the students the following And this is our timeline. We're going to have people submit ideas the middle of October, then they do a pair voting, so two ideas will come up on the website, and then you pick the idea that you want, and then the best ideas come to the top. And then, those ideas are funded in a lean way. And most of the ideas from the other cohort members have said that some of the ideas actually don't even have a price tag to them, so. And then, once the ideas come to the top, they go into workshop, and then they're implemented in January of that year, of this year. So, we're excited to get this rolling, and we're going around talking to the custodians, the paras, the teachers, the cooks, everybody to get their ideas generated already at the beginning of this school year.
This sounds like, this sounds like a great project. Can you clarify something for me?
Yeah.
To submit an idea, do you have to be part of the cohort, or anyone can submit an idea? I mean, this year, from the staff and teachers?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. To submit an idea, you're part of the Fridley community, but the people that are doing this are only part of the cohort. So, I think I get your question. So, like, Spring Lake Park isn't doing this. Am I not getting your question?
Within Fridley, do you have...
Within Fridley.
Within Fridley schools, do you have to be a member of the cohort, like the picture of the little group of you?
Oh, oh, no, 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 no.
To submit an idea?
No.
Or anyone who you open it up to within the Fridley community?
That is our team, and those are the promoters.
Okay.
But everybody submits ideas, and everybody votes.
Thank you. That was my question.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get those ideas ready, Mary.
All right. I've got some notes.
Oh, she's already got some ideas going.
I think this is, this is great. I'm excited to hear how it goes, and it will be, if it goes well, it'll be a great way to involve our students in sharing their, you know, you see things from different perspectives sometimes, and...
Exactly, exactly.
And that's a great way to get...
The frontlines people see things way differently, so.
Exactly.
We're excited. Maybe you can come back and let us know what ideas made it to the top, what you're going to be implementing.
Yeah, yeah. I would be happy to do that.
Great.
Thank you. Great idea.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Now, we move into the business action items part of the meeting, and we'll start out with our resolution of accepting gifts. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district over the last month since our July Board meeting. The following persons donated to Fridley Middle School for a total of $70. Leah Likeness, and that is all we have for the month of August, and we would like to thank Leah. And do I have a motion to approve the, to approve accepting the gifts?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Prueto, and this is a resolution, so if the clerk would call the roll?
Stop.
Aye.
Aye.
The resolution passed. Next, we have a motion for the second readings and adoption of policies, but before we take any motions, we'll ask Dr. Hile to read through those, to highlight those.
So, we have a policy for eco-education, and the wording was just changed on that from gender. We mentioned that the last time, as well as for Policy 205 for open meetings and closed meetings, the words were changed for that to citizens. And for Policy 206, public participation in school board meetings, we have to make sure if we do not have a quorum that we have interactive networks available, and we're actually using that today with Mr. Rita, Riddle, so.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading of the adoption of policies?
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved by Prueto, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next, we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda is regular business items that show up on our monthly agendas. The consent agenda has routine items, including minutes of the regular school board meetings and work session held on July 17, 2018, monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absences, terminations, resignations, and retirements. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Prueto. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carried. I will invite Jennifer Klosman up to the podium to go over the first reading of policies for this month.
Thank you. There's a few policies that we have that kind of piggyback on Policy 105 that was just approved, or excuse me, 102 that was just approved by the Board tonight. Policies 401 and 413, and then the corresponding form all have updates to the language with regards to the gender change that was previously approved tonight. So, you'll see that as the change again in 401, 413, and then the corresponding form for 413. There was one additional change in 413, and that was at the end of the policy, where you see the addition to the reference to the statutory, I keep flipping here, requirement with sexual abuse prevention training that needs to also be included. So, that is included as well with the legal statutory reference. And then, when you flip to 419, you will see some language additions regarding kind of some alternative ways of consuming tobacco products as being prohibited. So, asking that the Board consider these, sorry, I have one more, for approval in the next round, and if there's any corrections, just to follow up with me on that. The final policy that we have tonight is the gifts to employees and school board members, and this is also a reflection of the nominal, is oftentimes what you'll hear described as, value of gifts that can be provided, and that's generally in that $5 range. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you for that overview and summary of changes that we can look for. Next, we're going to address the school board email address change. So, the district has had individual emails for each board member, as well as a board email in the past, and in effort to align our work with our governance role in that the Fridley School Board acts as one voice, and as an individual board member, we do not make decisions or speak for the entire board. So, we have made the decision to drop those individual, personal, school district emails for board members and move only to the full board email. So, the public will have the same access to us, but anything that comes in from the public to the school board will go to one email address and will go to all email, excuse me, all the full board at one time versus individual emails to each board member. So, that aligns with our, we speak with one voice, and we do not represent the entire board when we are individual and not in a quorum setting. So, that email board, that board email address will remain on the website as it already is, so that is a great way to connect with us. And now, reports from school board members. I will report first on the Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting. At this board meeting, they highlighted and handed out some pamphlets that describe, in Fridley, we have a multi-system, a multi-tiered system of support. It's also referred to as MTSS, where there's different tiers of supports for students at different levels. And Northeast Metro 916 also has a multi-tiered system of support once students who are placed in their district begin school there. And their tier one are those students who have made the progress required, that they're ready to return home to their, their school district. So, I just want to share that to let people know that they're following the similar model in their school districts, so when students go back and forth between District 916 and the Fridley District and other member districts, that they, they maintain that multiple, multi-tiered system of support. One of the other big items, the 916 district has been, Fridley actually piloted this program with 916, the teacher-child induction training. And so, we were the first school district to do this with 916, and it's a coaching model for our teachers and paraprofessionals in special ed, and they coach sort of a train the trainer, and then we have coaches trained in our building, our existing staff, to work with other staff who are serving children with special education needs. And the hypothesis when the pilot began was that the referrals to the 916 school district would decrease, and that has indeed happened in Fridley. Our referrals, we decreased the number of students. We refer to the 916 Special Education District by 11 referrals. So, as a pilot, it has proven to, it has proven the hypotheses that they thought, and they're going to be continuing to expand that, and so we have those trained staff now in our district, which is very exciting, and led the way in that area with 916 for the other 13 member school districts that are a part of it. And District 916 has also turned the corner. There will be no more buildings. They've had several new buildings in the last four or five years, and they're doing more preventative work in supporting school districts in their home district, such as the training program that I just spoke of. That's one of the ways that they're trying to reduce the need for more buildings, which are very expensive, and we'd rather have students in our home district. While we're fortunate to have this resource, we'd rather have them here at home. So, that's a, that's a good sign, and the last thing on 916 is they have received an early intervention grant, which is, this is another pilot program to provide early childhood day treatment program to help in early childhood classrooms and pre-K classrooms. This is really exciting because if we can help those students and they, through this pilot, find it to be successful, we'll be able to help students way earlier on in the process before they get behind in school. So, we'll be keeping our eyes on that. Next up, Dr. Hile, report for the Association of Metropolitan School Districts Board Meeting.
Thank you. I attended the AMSD meeting, School Board meeting, District School Board meeting, excuse me, on August 10. At that meeting, they chose new executive committee members, as well as new legislative committee members were approved. There were two presentations. One was by Dr. Rose Chu from the Minnesota Educational Equity Partnership, or MENNEP, and that was on Teach Minnesota 2020. And basically, what that was is a partnership that helps to develop state policies and funding frameworks to help increase the number of teachers of color and American Indian teachers in Minnesota. There also, there was also another presentation that was given that was shared on the update on the Cruz-Guzman case versus the state of Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you. Important future school board dates. We have a light, light agenda here tonight. Community Resource Fair and Backpack Giveaway, August 25 at 10:00 a.m. at the Fridley Middle School. This is always a very well-attended event. I think it might be in its third year, maybe fourth, something, something like that. A Lotus Sims usually comes and talks to us. A Lotus Sims usually comes and talks to us about that. But that, that will be well-attended by our community, and a lot of our community members contribute to that. We have opening teacher workshop, August 27 at the Fridley High School Auditorium. The first day of school for the 2018-19 school year is September 4 for Hayes Elementary, Fridley Middle School, grade 5 and all-new students, Fridley High School, grade 9 and all-new students, the Alternative Learning Center, grade 9 and all-new students, and the Fridley Community Center, the pre-K classrooms. The first day of school for all of our Fridley students is September 5. And the Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting will be held September 5 at 6:00 p.m. at the Bel Air School in White Bear Lake. The AMSD Board Meeting will be held September 7 at 7:00 a.m. at the Ties Conference Center. The Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting will be held September 18, and I want to point out, this will be a new location with the, the city hall moving out of the district boundaries. The Fridley Public Schools Board Meetings will, beginning in September, now be held at the Fridley High School Media Center moving forward. The work session will be at 5:30, the open forum at 7, and the business meeting at 7:30, all in the Media Center at Fridley High School. The Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting is September 19 at 6:15 p.m. at the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Office, and the Schools for Equity in Education is September 21 at 9:00 a.m. at the Radisson Hotel in Roseville on Cleveland Avenue. That is all we have on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Stark, seconded by Prewito. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:04. See you next month.